For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I wanted to announce that we do have a township video running in here now. There's a camera up there recording audio and video and I'll talk about that a little later, but I wanted everybody aware that it is up there. Public comment, are there any public comments on the agenda items? Seeing none, I'll move on. This past week, we've lost two people, one in Bucks County, one right here on the township. So John Mann passed away on January 7th. John, after completing college, started teaching at Penrich High School. After teaching, he began a career in business, retiring from Drager in 2004. John served his community with two terms, the Penrich School Board, and served as a Township Supervisor on West Rock Hill from 1988 to 1999, and then again from 2004 to 2015. So it's a total of 28 years, I believe. John will be missed by this community. I'd like to have a moment of silence for John Mann. We also lost Mike Fitzpatrick. Mike passed away on January 6, 2025, a long battle with Melonova. It was, he really fought hard on that. He served for 10 years as a Buck County Commissioner, and he served 12 years as a member of the United States Congress representing all of us, and he did a fine job. We will miss him also. So I'd like a moment of silence for Mike Fitzpatrick. Thank you. I want to announce that there will be an executive session after this meeting to discuss legal issues. First on the agenda, or coming up on the agenda now, is the consent agenda for this evening. The items on the consent agenda are the December 18 minutes, the January 6 reorganization minutes, the win, plan, review status, escrow release, and vouchers, emergency services reports, building zoning and building permit reports, public works report, planning commission, and the Conservation Committee. The Conservation Committee, I believe, did not meet, and neither did the Planning Commission. That's why they're all in there. We'll have time to discuss this stuff, but first we have to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
No, I'll second.
Discussion first.
Yeah, now I will open this for discussion.
Okay, I cannot vote on the approval of the minutes in December. I was here as a private citizen, I was not on the board.
Okay.
I will abstain from that decision.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. Okay, well, we'll approve the whole thing of the consent agenda when we get to it. I do, we had a lot of other business that was involved in the reorganization meeting. So I just wanted to highlight that for folks, so they're aware of what happened last week in the reorganization meeting. Resolution 2020-01 was a resolution that set the board positions, as well as appointing positions for committees and authorities. Resolution passed with a vote of 2 to 1. The Resolution 2020-02 established the fee schedules for the year the resolution passed with a vote of 3 to 0. Resolution 2020-03 was a resolution for health insurance benefits. Per the resolution, supervisors who choose, per the resolution, supervisors who choose to receive healthcare benefits through the Township Plan would be required to pay 100% of the premiums of the plan for them by themselves. The resolutions would affect all future supervisors who were elected or reelected after approval of the resolution. The resolution would pass with a vote of 2 to 1. Additionally, the board approved the purchase and installation of a video recording system for the meetings. This item passed with a vote of 2 to 1. The unit purchase cost $159. The unit is up there, it is recording. The results of the meetings of this meeting, let me say, the results of the Board of Supervisors' meetings and the Planning Commission meetings will all be posted. They will be posted on the West Rock Hill YouTube channel, and Greg will supply links to that following, probably the next day after the meeting, as soon as they're uploaded. So if you go to the West Rock Hill website and you click on...
Government.
Government, in there, there's a link to videos. You can just click on that or just wait. Greg will be tweeting those out, we can put them on Facebook.
There's already two videos up from, oh, three or four years ago.
Yeah. Okay. The purchase and installation of a surveillance system, which included a camera for the lobby and four cameras for coverage of the building's exterior. The unit was purchased for $1,853. The Township is consulting with the Penrich Regional Police for optimum placement of those cameras, and this item passed with a vote of 3 to 0. The purchase of a microphone for the lectern. The purchase included a wireless microphone, removal of the overhead mic, which is up there, moving the microphone over the engineer's table out this way, so it had better coverage on Steve when he speaks, because that's also bad placement there, and then adjustments to the whole system. And that was a cost of $695, and the item passed with a vote of 2 to 1. And the board approved a one-time additional payout to the Holiday House Pool of $2,000 to match funds previously given by the Sellersville Borough. The total purchases for all of those items was, of the things we purchased, was $2,707 total. So that's what I had. Are there other comments about the, if anything, on the consent agenda?
Yes, the Conservation Committee did not meet in December, and they will not meet tomorrow night, per lack of agenda items.
Okay. Are there any other comments? All right, I'll make a motion, or I will ask for a motion, to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I can second it.
All in favor? Actually, I'd already made that. I'd already made it, so we just... Confirmed appointments, there are none. Committee reports, Park and Rec?
All right, Park and Rec. 2020, here we are, Park and Rec. We had our in-home reord meeting last Thursday evening. We agreed to vote to stay on as Chair, Robbie Fisher's going to stay on as Vice Chair. Suzanne stepped down as Secretary, and Jody stepped up to be Secretary, so I appreciate helping out Suzanne, and we welcome Jody in her role as Secretary. Couple things on the agenda, the Scouts stopped by. They had donated to help their time for any events that we have in the township this year, so I appreciate them stopping by and offering all their help. So you reach out to Mr. Schrammeyer, you know, vice versa, so we can, you know, collaborate when they can be able to help and all that stuff, so that'd be great. We have a new, besides a new website for the township, actually Park and Rec also has a new Park and Rec section that we can post events and pictures and, I assume, videos as well. So that's pretty cool. We got a lot of good stuff in that sense. We have the Veterans Memorial. We're trying to finalize all those details. We need actually a final deadline, probably in the middle of February to have it finalized and everything prints and final proofs done and completed by the middle of February. So we can have a Memorial Day timeframe for the, what do I want to say? For the dedication. Thank you, I've been just up there for a minute. So we're hoping to be right around Memorial Day timeframe for the dedication. So we're looking for the middle of February. We approximately have about $1,500-ish, somewhere around there, Sherri? Appreciate that. The Park and Rec was having a conversation. We decided that we would possibly ask the supervisors if they might possibly be willing to match what we would have to make a donation towards the Veterans Memorial. I know we have some assets in the account, but we were also looking to see if the supervisors would be willing to make a donation as well.
I would like to see the amount that you have, so we can...
Yep, Sherri's got that. It's right around $1,500.
$1,500?
Yeah, so we're looking to have more. I didn't write a check yet either, so I've finally put it in.
Excuse me, what were you looking for total?
Right around, so the total's going to be right around $3,000, $3,500, probably final with the installation costs and stuff like that. So we're looking to, we're close to halfway. Yeah, so that's what we're looking for. So maybe if we could possibly do that, Fred, and put on any new...
I was going to say, I was going to say some donations out there. I think, Fred Nicer, Mulley Road. I think we raised the money privately for the last memorial, and I think we'd like to do the same thing this go-around, and we're going to do our best to do that. And I think, based on discussions today, we're at roughly $2,000.
That's good.
So, and there's been an awful lot of promises. And I think if anybody would like to donate privately, that would be, you know, appreciated. But I don't think, at least the group that I'm working with, are not looking for public money for the memorial. Thank you.
That was from the Park and Rec. That was our conversation that we had.
David, we should just chair that until Fred comes up with...
Yeah, I think we're going to meet next week and see where we're at, and then go back to some of these people who made promises, and hopefully we can make it work. But I'll guarantee we'll make it work somehow.
Okay, thank you.
Very cool, thank you. And we have some reminder dates. April 18th is our annual fishing derby. It's a Saturday morning from 9:00 to 12:00. It's going to be right across the street. We'll have it stocked the weekend, or the Friday before. That is Easter weekend, no, it's not Easter. It's not Easter weekend. It's the weekend after Easter. We will have our annual movie in the park in August. We're not sure of a date, we don't have one set yet. And our annual September Fest, September 27th, the last Sunday in September as well. I think that is all. That's it.
I have a question. Fred, you said you're meeting when, next week?
Yeah, we totally set it up for Thursday at 4:00, subject to attendance by the Wreckin' Park people. Maggie Verical is the one keeping records, we want to make sure that everything's up to date there.
David, what is your date that you need to have?
It's going to be close to the middle of February, because if we go back from the end of May, when we'd like to have it presented, they gave us a timeframe, six to eight weeks. So if we go back two months, that will be the end of March. And then they said there's two weeks for that final proofing, so that goes back to the beginning of, or midway through March. And then we're trying to finalize it in the middle of February, so we have some overlap of making sure installation gets done. So you're talking three months back, minimum. So we're trying to just make sure that we have those numbers and deadlines, so. Because we'd like to have right around the middle of that.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
I have none. I make a motion to approve his report.
I'll second it.
Cool, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Police question, Chief, Rod Blake.
This is our police report for January 2020. It closes out our December 2019, and it closes out 2019 calls for service. So you'll see that we had 519 calls for service. Of those, 264 were in East Rock Hill and 255 were in West Rock Hill. We had 16 crashes in East Rock Hill and 12 in West Rock Hill. 16 were reportable crashes and 12 were non-reportable crashes. We had five Part 1 crimes and 22 Part 2 crimes in December. You'll see the crimes as follows, in East Rock Hill, burglary, assault, two theft cases, or three fraud cases, criminal mischief, a possession of a weapon or school property, DUI, trespass, two harassment cases, an ordinance violation, and five dog law violations. In West Rock Hill, the crimes are as follows, burglary, criminal mischief, two fraud cases, one DUI, one harassment, and two dog law violations. And you'll see that the criminal charges filed for December 2019, one for aggravated assault, two for simple assault, one for resisting arrest, one for possession of methamphetamine, one for possession of drug paraphernalia, two arrested for DUI, two arrested for harassment, one arrested for disorderly conduct, and one arrested for criminal mischief. And we'll see the activities there in the department with traffic enforcement, 226 details, 20 traffic details in Old Buffalo Pike, issuing 17 verbal traffic warnings, 25 citations, and 36 written warnings, and also conducted 300 business checks. Just to have you note that, closing the year out, we closed out with 6,510 total calls for service. In 2018, we had 6,664 calls for service. So our calls for service were down. Our total accidents in 2019, 370, and in 2018, 383. Our yearly offenses, we had 490 in 2019 and 460 in 2018. And our criminal charges in 2019 were 219, and in 2018, 213. So our criminal charges went up, our offenses went up, but our calls for service went down and our accidents went down. So, and they did go up drastically, and crime cyclical nature, so it ebbs and flows. I would just like to say that probably with the increase in criminal charges, I'd just like to say my guys do a better job. So they're doing a good job in making those arrests. I just have one quick comment about John Mann. He was always a friend of the police department. I was hired by John Mann in 1988. He was a supervisor along with Doc Durstein and Vernon Markley. And in 1992, when we merged the departments with Sellersville and East Rock Hill, he was a big part of that. So he was, you know, he was a good friend of the police department. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I have one question for you. We've had complaints about the intersection, not the intersection, but the T in the road at Ridge Valley and Allentown Road. I know that Sergeant Maloney came out and met with Greg and met with Pendot, and do you have any, can you give us any update on that?
I don't know.
The problem is that people are coming over the bridge, heading north on Allentown Road, and the turn is so, it's been carved out to a point where they can just fly around the corner. And there's nothing there that's kind of slowing them down, and the people that have driveways just on the other side of that are worried about pulling out of their driveway and being hit.
I thought that Pendot had said they were looking at the placement of that stop sign further towards Allentown Road, and probably making a bigger digress into the roadway. But I think shrubbery, the height of some shrubbery was also an issue with site...
Greg, I think I speak to that.
Yeah, Pendot is going to write a letter to the property owner asking him to trim the hedges down to two feet. They're also going to paint the turn so that it would push people more towards the center of the road instead of cutting it short. And they talked about moving the stop sign by the church.
So hopefully we'll be able to clear up the problem there, which could eventually cause a very dangerous situation.
Yeah, because they sweep, they come off of Allentown Road, and it's a sweeping curve to the right to go onto Ridge Valley Road. And people familiar with that roadway, they're just going to take that as a fast street or continue at the same speed that they are on Allentown Road, just to make that sweeping turn onto Ridge Valley. And there's several driveways right there, so, you know, it could be a site distance problem to pull out.
Am I allowed to make a quick comment?
One second, do you, do either of you have any comments for the... Okay, yes.
Cliff Cole, Chute Crap Road. I would just like to comment that I still am seeing truck traffic on Allentown Road. From, I don't exactly know where the signs go on the north side, but I know that there are signs.
Yeah, you're not supposed to.
Right. And in fact, I followed one that went in, and he ended up at JBS Beef Processing Plant in Soderton. So I don't know if the supervisors would be willing to ask Mr. Lippincott to perhaps give JBS a call and remind their drivers that they're not allowed to do that.
Yeah, I think the problem is they're detoured that way sometimes on, you know, Waze or GPS. If there's a problem on 309, so they detour them that way. So I think once that gets known, that that's a limited access roadway for truck traffic, that they stop recommending you go that way. But I can certainly, I can certainly email them.
I would buy that if it hadn't been for the fact that he pulled into the JBS beef plant.
Probably, I mean, it's probably, obviously a shortcut, rather than going out probably 663 to 309 and...
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yes?
Vogel, Finland Road. Could you put a speed bump on the turn from Allentown Road to Ridge Valley Road?
Um... Excuse me, excuse me, could you stand up, please, and say your name and address again?
Carolyn Vogel, Finland Road.
Okay, thank you.
Where people make the turn from Allentown to Ridge Valley Road, could you put a small speed bump?
That'd be up to Pendot to put that on there. They'd probably have to do a study for that. That roadway's 40 mile an hour, Allentown Road, so for them to slow down traffic for speed bump, I think they would be an extensive study for that. You usually see those speed calming devices in, like, developments, you know, where traffic is slow anyway, but they're trying to really slow it down because there's, you know, pedestrian and children traffic there.
Thank you, yes.
Frank Schuman, there at 1030 Allentown Road. From what I understand, you're going to, like, white line it out to make the cars not go on the white lines?
Right.
Is it worth looking into these three-foot or four-foot metal barriers if you put one, two, or three? And, you know, curved it off that way so they really couldn't? Because I don't know, you know, the white lines, I think, is a plus.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, this may be another alternative.
That's a good idea. I mean, that would have to come from Pendot.
And I'm not sure Pendot's come back with their full plan yet.
They have not. I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, right. Any other comments for the chief?
But I'll email, I'll email JBS, just to say, hey, we've seen truck traffic along Allentown Road, and they're coming in here, and we need backing plan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how, I'm sorry. That's how things get done, you know? A complaint comes into the supervisor. I know Mr. Schumanero, or, Schrammeyer, we were up there with Finland Road. There was complaints there. Jim got involved, I know Don was involved, Jay was involved at that time, and Pendot, you know, became involved. Now we have this other issue here on Allentown Road and Ridge Valley Road. So, you know, it's important that, you know, don't just complain about it. Complain on my shoulders or Greg's shoulders, that's what our shoulders are here for. If we can get the proper people in place or contacted, you know, to look at these issues, that's what we're here for. You know, so far Finland Road looks like it's working, you know? Waiting for the last phase of that to be completed with the application of a surface on the asphalt. So that's, that's look government at work, and that's what we're here for.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to...
I'll make a motion to accept the chief's report. One second.
One second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, chief. Joint Recitatory, we had a short meeting. Not really anything to report this time of year. Just starting to gear up now for spring and starting to get the pool, and think about how we're going to clean the pool, get it ready for May. It'll be here before we know it. So I really don't have anything else to add to the report tonight. We can motion to, or, does anyone have any questions?
Neither.
Okay. Motion to approve the report?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Tax collector report.
Okay, I filed my liens the end of last week with Bucks County Tax Claim Bureau. The total liens was $5,894.83. And we were up about $668 from last year on my liens. So I have collected my money for the month of January and will not have a deposit until February.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Any, any questions for tax collector?
I have none.
Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. There is no engineer's report, that was in the consent agenda. Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's only one item on the Solicitor's report this evening. Excuse me. And that is a public hearing in consideration of adoption of an ordinance that you authorized me to advertise last month. PMRS, I guess weary of having a lot of different municipal houses enact a lot of different style and substance ordinances, went to a different procedure where you adopted a plan and then an ordinance formally adopting the plan. So you've already adopted the plan, the ordinance has been prepared and advertised, and it is before you for considered, for a public hearing and then consideration this evening. And basically, what the ordinance does is it adopts the plan that you already reviewed officially by ordinance. And the reason you need to do this by ordinance is that your old pension ordinance was an ordinance and not a resolution, so it can only be amended by an ordinance.
Okay. Right, here.
Oh, you could open the, open the public hearing for public comment.
Okay, okay. I will open the hearing for public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? All right, we'll close the hearing.
And you can just call for a vote?
Okay, I'll call for a vote to, I'll make a motion. One second?
Wait one second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that was ordinance 241, I believe. Correct?
Correct. Okay.
All right, thank you. And I have nothing further to report unless you have questions for me.
Does anyone have questions for our solicitor?
I did.
Seeing none? Motion to approve the solicitor's report?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Township managers' report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the Treasurers' Report, from the end of December 31st, 2019. I'll go over the funds, the general fund, $310,319.27. Highway aid, $32,138.74. Open space, $929,724.24. The park fund, $11,085.44. The equipment fund, $204.72. Highway capital, $128.71. Street light, $33,774.80. Reserve funds, the general fund reserve, $370,732.48. Open space, Manterfield, $15,178.44. Suitage maintenance, $175,731.38. Stormwater fund, $6,770.55. The escrow funds, $393,177.16. You also have a copy of all the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report, subject to audit and pink and the payment of bills. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any comment? Is there any comment? No comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
The next item in the board's packet is a notice of violation on 1912 Bethlehem Pike, and also zoning hearing board application. On December 4th, a notice of violation was issued on 1912 Bethlehem Pike. Item number four, which is running two businesses on one property, they have appealed to the zoning hearing. Item number five was a light that was shining onto the roadway that they no longer turn on, so it comes into compliance. However, resale use occupancy for the gym, the signing permit, and the requirement of paving the parking lot has not been done. What I would like the board to do is to authorize me to take that notice of violation to the zoning hearing board, and what, what was I going to say?
If the zoning hearing board decides to grant the relief request, you would like it conditioned to comply with all of the items listed in the notice of violation.
That's what you said.
I was going to say... Right, that's what I'm trying to do.
Are you asking for a motion?
I'm looking.
I'll make a motion. Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the Township Manager's report?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Old business, Treasurers' Report on the consent agenda. I can, at the, let me step back one step further. We've heard from people, why do we have to keep reading the Treasurers' Report here? Why can't we just have it available for people? Okay? My feeling on that was, it's a good idea. Right now, we've got about 40 people in here to get to see it, and after that, it gets put in a drawer, nobody sees it. I would like to see it on the website, so that people can look at the Treasurers' Report that you just saw with all of the fund balances, and also the bills. Because it's your money. Why shouldn't you be able to see how your money's being spent? So... So, there were some questions at the GRIO meeting when this came up, so I tabled it till tonight so we could open this and have a decent discussion on it. And I will, I will say that some people have come to me and said they enjoy seeing it up there because they feel like it's being read to them and they understand it more.
Yep.
And I completely understand that. So, I would like to change the position slightly and just say, we put it on the consent agenda, those two items, so it is available online and also, Greg can still read the Treasurers' Report, but it all, but it gives everyone out here, it gives all fifty-three hundred residents, an opportunity to just go online and look at it. And if you can't get online because you don't have a PC, I mean, having the libraries, you can come here and look at it, it would be available for everyone. I would just like to open this up for a conversation right now to understand what other people think about it, and I'll start with you, Jay.
Yeah, well, from my perspective, I think it should be shown up on the screen.
Yeah.
Transparency.
Right.
People wanna be able to see and look at what they're, there are people in the community that do not have computers.
Right.
And it does, it gives the people assurance that we're not trying to hide anything.
Right, right.
So, I'm okay with that. I'm also all right with having it on, online to go, to go research, but I do think we need to be showing it, just like Eddy's right now.
Yeah. And you have a comment?
I'm good with both ways.
Okay. So, I'll open the public comment. Does anybody have an issue or want to discuss the fact that it would be online and also read? Yes, comment?
Not necessarily, Regina Schrameyer, Churners Road, not necessarily that it's online or that it's here, but those big numbers don't give you a meaningful look at what's happened in the township every month, how, how we're proceeding in certain areas. And I would like to see something up there that tells me how the township is being managed. That, just so throwing those numbers up really doesn't do that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Yes.
Paul Raisner, Long Avenue. Are you saying you also would put the bills on there?
Uh, no, we wouldn't put the bills up there, that's too big of a list.
Oh, okay.
That's huge, yeah.
But the bills would be...
The bills would be available online.
Okay, okay, that's, that was my question. In both ways is excellent.
Okay, thank you.
A point of clarification, I think they're available on Friday, right? Prior to the meeting?
Yes, what we do, we post the consent agenda on Friday, so everybody has a chance to review it, because for the consent agenda, the board usually goes through it very fast. That way you all get to see it on Friday, and as they go through it fast on Wednesday night, you know what they're approving quickly.
Like, yeah, like Fred said, it'll be out there days of a Friday before this meeting. So, it would have all been posted last Friday, and anybody that wanted to see it would have had access to it prior to the Friday meeting.
Prior to it being passed.
Yeah, correct, exactly. Yes, Frank?
Frank Schuman, there at ten thirty, Allentown Road. I think the way you're presenting it is the right way to do it, and I think you still have to have a reason for people who wanna come to these meetings.
Yeah.
And, you know, I was the one that asked you to table it, and I thank you for that. Jay, I thank you for the thought of that, having it both ways, and, you know, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I will put up a motion, I will make the motion, to have the Treasurers' Report and Payment of Bills list put on the consent agenda, which will be available on Fridays before the meeting and give you time to look at it, and then it will also be available in the minutes after the meeting, and it will also be, Treasurers' Report will still be read in the meeting, so.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. New business?
You still own old business?
Oh, old business, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
I have an old business item right now, and that is the, the subject of Airbnbs that we've been discussing for months. I have reached out to some other supervisors in other townships, and I'm, I'm in the process of getting some paperwork that is related to what they do up in the Poconos in Pike County. When I get that information, I'm gonna forward it to Greg so that he can share it with the other two supervisors regarding how they handle these things. Now, you, we've heard arguments, and I've had a conversation with some citizens just last week about the issues up on Tower Road. Tower Road is a unique area because it's one way in and only one way out. So you have to consider the residents that live up there, and those of you residents that are sitting in this room that have expressed your concern and complaints to me, I'm on your side. And I wanna make sure when we make a decision that we make the right decision, but we need to protect the citizens of this township so that they can enjoy their home as well as everybody else enjoys theirs. So I'm, I'm asking for the, for the board to have a little patience here in, in the process of what we go through.
I agree.
Till we come to a, to a decision on what we do. I do think that we need to do something. It was stated last month that we, that someone doesn't want us to create a knee-jerk reaction. This is anything but a knee-jerk reaction. I've been on the police commission for almost the entire time I've been a supervisor, and I know the issues that the police have dealt with up there on Tower Road. I know the parking in other people's driveways, I know the blocking of the roads. These things, we have to work out because we're all neighbors, and yes, Airbnbs can be nice, but there are places for them that they have to, to abide by. So, that's my, that's my concern from old business.
Yeah, great, and I agree with you completely. We need to get this right first time, you know, and the information you're getting is gonna help a lot.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir?
Paul Chapman, I live on three oh two Tower Road, I was just gonna bring that up tonight to see if you were looking into other things or if it was finalized, and it's not just about Tower Road, but it is in my backyard and a lot of our places, and there's a place for it. Bedminster Township, the thing Jay's doing, it's been to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, it's a residential area, there's a lot more stuff out there, and other townships have already passed this, and we need to do something here, whether you like it or you don't like it, we need to control this because down the line, big hotels, when you find out about the situation up in Pike County, there were people living in New York that just bought a place, never lived there, and opened it up, and it was just strictly business, just like is gonna happen in twenty, fifty years if townships and places don't get a handle on it. It's, it's a business, it's not a making a little extra money, and it doesn't belong, it sure doesn't belong where we're at.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, thank you. Is there any other old business?
Oh, I didn't even see that.
All right. Seeing none, move on to new business. Does anyone have new business?
I don't have any business.
Okay.
You have two items, I think you have one to consider.
Yes.
First item, does the board want to make a donation to the Park and Rec on behalf of John Mann?
I'm all for that, I think we should, that his family said in little flowers, please make a donation to the Park and Rec. I think, I think we should be doing that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
I'd make a suggestion that we contribute five hundred dollars in the name of John Mann to the Park and Rec.
I'm okay with that.
All right.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. John did a lot for this township, he sure did. I think, I think that's worth, that's good.
Something else?
And you have a second item. The board needs to make a motion if they want to appeal the FERC decision for the Adelphia.
I believe we do. Can I get a motion?
We, we almost have to at this point.
Yeah, we do, absolutely do, yeah. So you're making a motion, Jay?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, you're making a motion, okay, okay. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. We all, we all, we all agree with that, this has to be appealed. Okay, is there any other new business?
I have none.
Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. The floor's open, you get two and a half minutes, and we can start with Mr. Cole.
I'm very happy, my name's Cliff Cole, twenty-four forty Shoe Craft Room. I'm very happy to see that you've decided to appeal the FERC's decision. In case the public is not aware, FERC has given the go-ahead to the Adelphia Quaker Town Compressor Station with contingencies that they also get all the necessary approvals from the DEP, for instance. But I just want to read what one of the dissenting, what the dissenting commissioner of the FERC wrote. It was a two-to-one decision, and to me, this is basically a blueprint for the appeal. This was Richard Glick. Today's order is not the product of reasoned decision-making. Its analysis of the project's contribution to climate change is shoddy, and its conclusion that the project will not have any significant environmental impact is illogical. After all, the commission itself acknowledges that the project will contribute to climate change, but refuses to consider whether the contribution might be significant if we're proclaiming the project will have no significant environmental impacts. So long as, that this is the case, the record simply cannot support the commission's conclusion that it will be no significant environmental impacts. Simply put, the commission's analyst, analysis of the project consequences for climate change does not represent the hard look that the new law, law requires. Richard Glick.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
I'd also like to comment that the Delaware River Keepers is also going to appeal this decision, and, and they are working with the Clean Air Council. We have had people from the Clean Air Council up here before, but if residents, and especially the supervisors, could join Delaware River Keepers, that would be a great thing. It gives them more standing in our community. If you need more information about that, it's free to join, and of course, they are looking for money too.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Any other public comments? Yes, Frank? Frank, you were first. Doesn't start yet.
I haven't hit it yet.
Now, I just have a question. About a year and a half ago, we discussed to clean out septic systems. It's on a three-year plan, and there was, I asked the question if it was possible to change that because you have senior citizens now where the families have already left them, and you got one, two people living in the house, and they're not putting out as much septic as an average family, and I don't know whether that's covered by state law that you can't change it, or...
DEP likes to see three years if, if they feel that things are going really well. Sometimes I've seen in certain areas where the soil types are excellent and reducing that requirement, but that's, it would have to be an amendment to the five thirty-seven plan, or at least an amendment to the online disposal system ordinance, and it would require Steve's and Greg communicating with DEP and getting their permission. It's not something that you would want to do unilaterally for fear of running afoul of DEP.
Okay, so it's gonna be status quo?
I don't know that that's what I said.
Well, no, we don't wanna go through with, you just said it's not something we may wanna do.
No, I, I said unilaterally, meaning like not without input from DEP and approval from DEP. Whether or not Greg or Steve reaches out to DEP to see if that's acceptable to them, that's the, the policy decision.
Because I think a couple other townships have approached that or were looking at it the same way, you know, I feel about it, and I don't know whether there are any, ever any changes made to it.
I've seen ordinances that require emptying every two years be extended to three years with DEP's approval, I've never seen three go to four.
Okay, thank you. I give my two minutes left if anybody else wants to use it.
John Swarlick, seven fifteen Ridge Valley Road.
You've got four and a half.
This is, this will take less time than talking to you to walk up there. You mentioned for recording meetings, you're gonna record the supervisors' meeting and the planning commission meeting.
Yes.
Can I ask that you also had the zoning hearing board meetings today?
I don't know if we can. Is there any law against, since we don't actually run the zoning hearing board?
I don't see any, the zoning hearing board would have to make their own decision.
Right.
But there's nothing preventing that.
If the zoning hearing board would allow us to, then we could do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Back to the floor.
I was just wondering, is that statewide with that septic stuff in every county in this whole state, or has every township set it up?
Your name and address, please.
Paul Chapman, three oh two Tower Road.
Hi, every township in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has to have an act five thirty-seven, sewage disposal plan approved by PENDOT. I don't represent municipalities all over the state, I represent municipalities more in Bucks and Montgomery County where the soil types are clay mostly, and I have not seen DEP approve anything less frequent than three years for emptying.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, Eddy?
Eddy Shermer, eighteen oh five Ridge Road. I would just like to ask the supervisors to consider the Pen Ridge Community Center, which is our senior center for West Rock Hill, your annual donation. I do not have the pamphlets for you or the budget to give you, we are running behind after their disastrous three-month close down because of the flood. We then turned around and had a management change, and so we're just, we are behind, but hopefully by February I will have
Okay.
the pamphlet and budget to give you, but I would like you to just keep in mind to consider the annual donation you make to the senior center.
We'll do that, thank you, Eddy. Are there any other public comments? Yes?
Yeah, Fred Dice Road, two oh one Lonely Road. I'd like to say just a little bit about John Mann. John was a, well, a good friend, and unfortunately, I was out of town and getting any chance to go to his service, but did have a chance to talk a lot about him, and I guess John, I don't know if anybody didn't like John Mann, he just had that type of personality. And I know my wife and I talked about him, well, several times, and I guess my feeling is that John's legacy will probably be that he never told a good joke. And I don't know how many times John would come up to me and say, Fred, you wanna hear a good joke? And I'd say, John, you know, I've heard a lot of your jokes, and you don't know good jokes. But anyhow, I guess I'd just like to say, you know, wherever John goes, because up or down, I hope he gets, you know, better material and maybe a better presentation so that he don't treat the people where he is the way he treated me all these years. Thank you.
At the funeral, John's children mentioned that John was always known as Happy Pappy, so. John always had a smile on their face, and they, they just, that family just loved him, and so did everybody around him, so. Thank you, Fred. Is there any other public comments? Yes, Dave?
Dave Rice, two nineteen Augustine. Just curious if we were talking about recording Park and Rec meetings since we were talking about all the other meetings?
No. No, we, we...
Okay, I didn't think so.
We hadn't planned on that, no.
Okay.
Not unless, unless you specifically come to us and say you wanna do it.
No, they're exciting, I mean, we prefer people to come to the meetings. If we can entice them to come to the meetings, it's better.
It's like the Conservation Committee, there's things that go on in there which a lot of people wouldn't understand because you're just kicking ideas around and stuff like that.
Correct.
When you get things like the Planning Commission, I mean, that, that's, that comes down to building and zoning and all that kinda stuff, and people really wanna see that in this meeting, and, and the zoning hearing board, if, that would be a good one to have, and I appreciate you bringing that up, so that's why those meetings were picked.
That's what I figured, I just wanted to clarify.
And we would have to investigate looking at, into other meetings, mainly because, believe it or not, that camera's secure, you can't just walk in this room and turn it on, so we make sure that whoever turns that on has the authority to turn it on, and,